Good evening, I will now call to order the August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Administrative Secretary Sean Fei, please call the role.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes, here.
Minson Meeker.
Here.
Kenny Gross.
Here.
Dean Serwin.
Here.
Edward Pearson.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment online, Sean? Is there a public comment here?
No.
There be no one else present to speak, I will now declare public comment period closed. Does anyone have any reordering additions or deletions on the agenda? We're all good on the agenda, Kathy? Okay. Thank you for all the thought. Approval of minutes of June twelfth, twenty twenty five, Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Everyone have a chance to look at them and were there any questions? Or can I get a motion? And a motion to approve?
Yeah, I can.
Can you take the role, Sean?
Sure, was that Min for the motion and Dean for the second?
Yeah.
Okay. Annie Chang Long.
Yeah.
Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Minson Meeker.
Yes.
Kenny Gross.
I think I was not here.
You were not here.
Okay. Edward Pearson.
Yes.
The motion passes, thank you.
Okay, let's dig in, review of draft rules of behavior policy.
We need a few minutes.
So we read it first and then.
Yeah, I think we need to read.
Yeah. Yeah, you can read it.
I mean, it's a discussion, right?
The reason that it's written is just for the record, but yes, it's a discussion and I think we can talk through it and what I was thinking is that, you know, Min and Kenny had provided a draft that then the staff has since been working on. So I've attached that version that Min and Kenny had provided us. And then the staff report basically talks about, and this is what we would talk through, kind of what staff's reaction was to that and some of the changes that they are thinking, not so much specific details, although we've worked on that too, but sort of conceptually. So like we could start by you guys explaining kind of conceptually and going through the policy as you made the changes, which that that's attached and it has the comment fallout, so it has Min's, all the comments Min had and her explanations of why it's drafted the way it is. So that that's the starting point, that then the staff went from there and we can explain what the staff thought and the changes that we think we should maybe make and you guys can help us weigh in on that.
And just so that this follows when we had a meeting with staff, there'll be nothing, this is.
Yeah, so this, the the version, the only thing I did to the version that Min had shared when we had that meeting is I just, Kenny, you had had some comments in an email. You had read it and so I just added those to this. But I think, you know, the point of this one is it kind of, and Min can probably speak to it, right, like some of the major concepts about what should go where and what we shouldn't miss or leave out and kind of some of these key things that you brought to the table for this, I think. And a lot of that is in.
Do you want me and Kenny to provide and go over these?
You can talk about, yeah, I think you should talk about how you thought to this version. Um, so I think we had reported this maybe one of the meetings a while back, but Kenny and I reviewed a number of policies from other similarly sized libraries that Kathy's team had put together. And then we sort of took, pieced together, I think, what we liked in some of the policies that staff had also flagged as liking. So in the draft that we shared with the team, with the library team, it starts with kind of an opening statement that just talks about the library being a community space and that we're all respecting each other, a lot of libraries started with that of kind of providing a reason for why there's rules of conduct. And then the biggest is trying to categorize the behaviors in buckets that are also tied to consequences and there's lots of different ways to do it. I think we tried to combine two different libraries, like there's certain libraries that have level one, two and three, and it's tied to sort of like how serious the behavior is and then those levels are tied to like how long you're going to be suspended or if your library privileges are just revoked. So we put it in those buckets and then Kenny and I met with Kathy and Nada and and I think they had some really good points about even just like the way we put the buckets may not necessarily fit with how they think about some of the behaviors. So I think they were going to go back and look at like moving some of the categories around, but I think generally what we talked about is like trying to categorize them into buckets and then making the consequences easier to follow or easier to track. And then we talked also about enforcement and then just tying it better or like cleaning up the municipal code, which is a separate issue. But the municipal code is also not super clear, there's a lot of different like do this and then you get that and it's kind of, it's hard to follow, you know, Kenny, if you want to.
Right, yeah, I'll pick up with the municipal code, I mean, we didn't tie it yet to the municipal code and to make it consistent with that yet, I think that's a next step type thing to the extent that's necessary and then enforcement as far as who on site has the authority or should have the authority to to take action on violence. Kind of unresolved, I haven't heard the chat, so I don't know.
And that's in the municipal code now, but I don't know if you guys found that commonly in policies or in the codes, we might look at that. I know the appeals process is in the policy and that kind of explains who's, you know, who's the in charge of appealing, but in terms of who's designated to do it, that's in our municipal code. So I don't know where that goes, but we will not forget at least. And then I think just the last thing we talked about with the team is there's a lot of libraries, I think there are rules, I mean, it's a really long list of rules. So I think we also talked about like communication with library patrons, like this is a lot to digest, maybe we do something that's a little bit more like patron friendly and easier to be like, these are the things that are definitely, you know, we we talked about there's some libraries that just have like zero tolerance on any sort of harassment or like threatening staff and that's just like an immediate, you know, you have to leave the library now. So I think just generally just talking about if you have a very long set of rules, how do you communicate it to patrons in a way that like they can quickly see like these are all the things that are not allowed here.
Did we talk a little bit, I think, about maybe bullet pointing some things that, yeah, how do we dispense the rules and did we talk a little bit about a shortened version?
Yeah, we have some examples that we've been looking at, kind of collect from other places and for sure, like at the county libraries, they didn't post anything. They didn't, they didn't want to post anything, but the staff were like, well, we need something. So they would paste like one version, like with the whole, in one place that nobody could find or see on the wall. And so staff are like, we need something we can point to and it needs to be all over. So they made like a one page that just has the four things, be nice to each other, you know, like the four things we have at the top. So kind of you've covered your bases by having the full set of rules on the wall, but you're not trying to communicate that much information and then also even with your brochures or wherever, what you're handing people can be parts of the policy or, you know, as long as you have the full policy available, I think, to make it a little more manageable. And we've been looking at some different examples of that.
I'd ask for a few minutes to just read this because this is the first time I've seen this document, so.
What I would say is, don't spend a lot of time on the level one to agree because the staff have made all recommending the three major changes there. Those, I believe, Min, if I'm not mistaken, the actual behaviors there are from our old code of conduct, which we are not fans of. And then you add it in some good stuff. So the staff have gone beyond that now and so like the list of things and the idea of severity levels, we're thinking of a different direction. So I I wouldn't spend too much time on those three things.
I just want to actually just be able to read it though and I it's a fault of mine, but I can't listen to people talk and read at the same time. Sorry. Yes, sir.
Kathy, do we have the version that's, is that revised?
I have parts of it. It's it's so rough that I didn't, I didn't want to publish it publicly, so I've got a copy that you can look at, should also be published, but.
So I'm really confused as to what I'm looking at. So is this the proposed or is this an old document that we want to talk about changing?
This is the, this is, yeah, so this is the initial draft that the committee prepared and gave to the staff to consider. So and it kind of contains some key pieces that we're going to move forward. But I would like to talk through with you the things that we want to change.
So we don't have here the document that is what staff would like to have?
I have some of it, but I want to talk through it first. I don't want, I I have, I want to talk conceptually about some of the things that we're thinking about the policy that you guys came up with. And in the, in the staff report, I mean, I'm going to say it, but it's written as well. When you're, when you're ready, I can start to try to.
Let's give it like a three more minutes to review and then we can have you review it, Kathy. You want to walk us through it? So it looks like we're looking at the scene, the the initial draft that the committee prepared and then I see in the in the memo that you guys wrote, there's an outline of.
Yeah, I would look at page twelve of the agenda packet, which is on the bottom of the page or the numbers to the packet versus any numbers related to other documents. Bottom. Page twelve, which is just the first page of the the staff report. So what I did here is just kind of say what the components are, right, because we're moving forward most of these components, the piece that I think I want to talk to you about is the the levels and the categorization and the matching their behavior to the consequence, right? So the welcoming philosophy statement, that's, we didn't do anything to that, we might have tweaked a little bit, so there kind of short list of expectations like these four things that are the kind of positive message about how we all need to be together in this public place and make it nice for everyone. The statement about where the conduct applies, which in other versions or previous versions, it's like repeated over and over versus just putting it up top and saying the supplies inside the library on the library's, you know, balconies, on the patio, like we have to make that decision. And the last time, a while ago, when we had this talk, there was a city attorney who, you know, said, I'm not sure what that outside boundary is, but from a staff perspective, we know we don't want to be policing the right car, right? So, but we also know that, you know, the reality is the balconies are are our problem, not a car problem and and potentially so are like the patio areas or the driveway. So I think we just will want to be here about where these rules apply. So that would be the same and the the staff wouldn't make any changes to that, any substantial changes. Then in in the one that you're looking at, which is the draft that we that we started on, there's kind of the list of, or the explanation of the the consequences and that we did approach that a little differently because again, the levels in this version, the version that that you guys prepared, the consequences are tied to those levels, right? So it says, you know, applies in all the buildings and then it goes on to say, you know, if you violate these rules, these are some of the things that can happen to you. So and then this key piece is that up to one year. Our concern about this listing is that it looks sequential and that people will say, well, I didn't get a verbal warning, so you can make me leave, you know, that kind of thing. So our, if you look at the staff report, like our thinking is that we we definitely want to convey, we could, any of the things up to a year, but that we will always, whenever possible, provide a verbal warning or give the person an opportunity to change the behavior, right? So we're not giving them like a list of, first you get a verbal warning, next you get this, because that's not the case. If you throw a chair at me, I'm not giving you a verbal warning. So just a little bit of a switch there on that piece and then the fifth section is the levels piece. So that's probably the main thing for us and there's a long paragraph, but I'll, I'll just talk about it. It's, we definitely have to write, have the guidelines that connect the behavior to the thing and people have to understand that and staff have to understand it so that we're applying that equitably and evenly all the time. But the problem with trying to put the behaviors into a level is that then there's so much nuance, right? So here's just an example and this is a live real example. Somebody accidentally urinates all over the floor. It costs money, it disrupts operations. It's very different than someone doing that on purpose, right? So if you have something to that effect as a level one, well, it might actually be much more severe. It's sort of like, it's, it's, how do you, how do you define the severity? And so it seems to us that it's both the behavior, but then there's these other pieces that you have to take into account, like how disruptive was it to the whole operation, you know, how, how much did it impact others? How frequently is it? Is it intentional? Is it, you know, something you're? You know what I mean? There's just all this nuance. And I think, I don't think we've necessarily gotten to the point where we're clear on how easy or difficult it would be to create some kind of a guideline that says they did this and they did it on purpose, you know, check, so that makes it worse. You know, makes it more severe. So that's sort of our thinking. And so we we took, we took these, this list of the things you can't do, rules or the behaviors and instead of categorizing them by level, they're in groups. And I mean, obviously there are things that, you know, we all know are severe crimes and, you know, I mean, there's, it's the little things that are harder to to place and figure out what to do with someone. So we, we wanted to, if you look at now page thirteen of the staff report, we ended up proposing to group the behaviors into these five categories that are not necessarily associated with any quote unquote level, but clearly dangerous or illegal behaviors. You're, you know, when we go to assess whether that's severe, it's going to be assessed that it's severe, there's no question. Putting a number of rules into the misuse of the library facilities and the property a section, and this one's a little rough and we're, we're still working on all of these, but disrupted behavior, like what does that mean? And how many things do you have to, you know, list? But there is, again, there's like the the intent there. I mean, again, like if you have a little kid that's running around and and they're just wild and they're not on purpose, you know, like there's just nuances again, but that kind of disruptive behavior or even, you know, the people who have mental health issues and they're talking out loud at the computer, that's different, right? There's just a lot of different things. So it's, it's hard to just unilaterally say that that's this severe. So there are a number of things in that category, but I think that that's kind of a funny category, which might be to look at. There's a lot of overlap and I think as Min kind of guided of, maybe not in this group, but to me, what is the key, what are you trying to do? So are you trying to stop people from sleeping? Like that was your best example. Or are you trying to make sure that they're not taking up space that should be, that other people want to use for the purposes that we're here for? So, you know, sleeping is impossible, like if people have rules about not flipping, we're not going around waking everybody up, we're not waking up fourteen year old that had finals and fell asleep, you know, it's totally impossible to do that in an equitable way. So what we're really trying to get at is if you're taking up the whole spot sleeping and I have people who are here to read or study or whatever, that's the, that activity is the, is the priority. So throughout all of this, kind of cleaning up again, the long list of rules that we had in our old code of conduct, there's just a lot of overlap and of course that wasn't categorized in any way. So as we've been going through these, it's been really great to kind of, what is it really? You know, is it really about the behavior of sleeping? Is it really about space? Is it really about, you know, like what is, what are we really trying to do? So misuse of library services is a pretty short one. It has to do with like, are you using somebody else's library card, you know, stuff like that. Personal belongings, that also is space. So I'm not sure about that category in terms of the name of that category, but there are belongings issues. It's also a hygiene issue, right? Like it falls into these different categories, the belongings, but mostly space and hygiene. So that's another category though, that's pretty important and that's one of the hard ones with, you know, how much? How many belongings, the language about wheeled conveyances for, you know, mobility purposes versus carrying things purposes, but then we have people from the farmer's market with wagons and, you know, like trying to just think through each of these to to see where the weaknesses, where are the things that are just totally not enforceable or, you know, getting down to that little bottom piece and I think we'll be ready to talk about those in more detail next time. And then a section on eating, drinking and smoking. And then same as the the copy that we started working from is the appeals piece. And I think the other things we wanted to do, a couple of other things is we wanted to pull out and we've modeled this after, after, I think, Long Beach, pull the the public health and safety out, right? It's not, we're, we're not, we don't want to pass judgment or set a level of severity on something, someone, it's just a fact. You're not clean. And it's not a, the consequence is it's not based on a severe severity, it's based on, I need you to go get clean, right? So there is no necessarily length of time associated with that, telling someone as we sweep, I have two people, you know, where we've had to ask them to leave and here's some suggestions. So we, we wanted to pull that out and take away this kind of what is a rule and what is just a thing, you know, a fact and a behavior.
But, but I'm sorry, but you know, are you saying pull hygiene and things like that out of the rules or just pull them out?
Make it a separate policy, its own separate policy, public, Long Beach, I think, called it public health and safety. I would want, you've got some input on that from people and look at maybe some others, but they call it public health and safety and they just pull all of that stuff out about, you know, bodily hygiene, open sores, communicable diseases, you know, all of these things that are not rules. They're not behaviors, they're just.
Yeah, there was something in here about having bodily secretions or something or something, things on your body that will transfer
Right.
to the furniture.
Right, and it's just different from, you know, yes, it's not allowed, but it's, it's not something that.
We should, we should have the ability to ask people to leave because they're defacing the.
And, and I mean, none of the consequences are really, the purpose is not to punish people, it's to make this safe work for everyone. So it's to eliminate the issue that you're having. But even so, once you have like levels, it 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 sounds like you're, you know, you're bad, you're more bad, you're extra bad. So I just think that it kind of hit us, we've been working on this, I mean, hours and hours and hours and hours, multiple staff people sitting in a room trying to do this. And the the whole public health and safety thing just popped out all of a sudden from, and it, and it was Long Beach that had it, I think, and I was like, oh my gosh. Yeah, that's not, it's not the same thing, it's not the same thing.
Kathy, can I ask a question? Then how will these categories be linked to the consequences?
Well, that's where we have to develop.
Illegal activities to me, like, these are bad, like, it's really bad.
Yeah. I mean, that's an easy call though, right? Like, so that's, that's the piece, we, we have to develop what is that like matrix or what is that decision tree that helps us get to, which is what we do now anyway, except without any matrix or, you know, it, it, the, the way that the code is written is not, does not make that easy. They're like, well, it's a thirty day, well, they did that, but they, oh, they did this. I mean, that's the problem of having it. You, if you do this, it's thirty days. If you do this, it's sixty days because it's, it's just, there's so many circumstances. So that's a whole piece of of this is what is that decision tree? And I do think it could. And I do think it could be, I mean, I think honestly, I think it's their intent. I mean, there might be other things, but to me, it's how often? Is, is it intentional?
Hmm.
Um, and then, of course, you know, how, how dangerous, disruptive, severe, whatever. And of course, if your behavior is that you pulled out a, a gun, well, I don't need to worry about your intent, right? Like it's done, you're, you know, we, we know that that can be severe. So I think it's a matter of creating that kind of workflow for people to walk through it and actually have, you know, the checkbox. Yes, it was on purpose, you know? And again, the trick is just really being careful about getting everyone to understand and be on the same page and having that mechanism in place. Um, and it's a question too, the city attorney may have thoughts about it, do we have to discuss it? I mean, maybe that's part of it. Maybe that's why these are like that, where it's like you did this, you get this. Maybe that's not that ambiguity of just saying if you do these things depending on, you know, other, some of the circumstances, you're subject to up to one year. Maybe there is a requirement that we be more, be less ambiguous. And if that's the case, then obviously we have to go back to thinking about it the way you, you've been thinking about it. But other libraries do have it not, they don't have the groupings associated with the, with the.
Do they do the decision tree also?
I have the decision tree from a Long Beach, although Long Beach might do levels, anyway.
I think Long Beach is one of the ones that is categorized.
Groups.
Yeah.
Oh, it has levels. So they also have a decision tree even with the levels. Um, and yeah, I mean.
I guess I'm thinking you would, the no brainer to me is like, what is the for sure one year red or red level? It's like, that seems like the one that you need the most, like clear cut, there is no, maybe it was okay, maybe it's a day, maybe it's thirty days. Because that seems like what's resulting in the actual punishment. A thirty day expense expulsion from the library, however you want to put it, you know? I think that those non-negotiable one year or longer are really the narrow down, the rest seem like there is a little flexibility based on intent based on situation.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely things, like you said, that are just no tolerance, right? Um, and that there would be very little ambiguity about whether this is severe and needs to be.
I think Councilman had a question for us.
Oh, I, I just was trying to put this in a question to staff. Um, I understand they need some more concrete procedures and all of that. But I'm also hearing that they want, they need to be able to look at severity, intent, mitigating circumstances in how they come up with the violation.
Yeah.
Now, uh, the really unfortunate thing is six people in this room taken a bar exam involving criminal procedure, which involves the base offense, severity enhancement, sentencing guidelines, all kinds of things. So we're trying to recreate something that is incredibly complex.
Yeah.
So the question that I think we should really deliver staff is do you want minimal rules of behavior with some discretion?
Hmm.
Or would you like to see a lot more detail that may leave out room for your discretion to gauge intent? If someone responds to a verbal warning with a haughty confrontational attitude, that should be an automatic enhancement right there.
Right.
Right? But well, where's that in the level, right? They respond super disrespectfully, well, that's rough. So I, I'd like to, for staff to feel empowered to, to, to look at the whole circumstances, as you were saying.
Yeah.
Without it being, without them being confined to, well, we can only do this. Um, so at that point, we have to, it's just, it's just, there's really no easy balance point, except get as much as you, your staff feels comfortable with, and I think it's good to get the feedback. Um, and then meet in the middle where they still feel they've got some ability to upgrade and, and have discretion.
And again, I, I don't know if there's some legal protection, you know, like that the idea is that we can't say we're going to use our discretion, you know? I mean, the fact is, we do it. We use our discretion every single time. And but it, but for purposes of liability and, you know, human rights is not a, a, allowed to be.
If that's not allowed, then it can't be, but I, I would like staff to feel that that trustees have got their back on.
Yeah.
By giving them some discretion to evaluate the situation.
Dean, and then, then.
So a, a few points and thank you, John, for teeing up the bar aspect of this. Um, we do a, I think on four. Which is your terms? Four to. Um, there's, uh, when you, when you're talking about torts and, and most of these are issues with their non-criminal, non-property wrong. Um, you have uh, an issue of intent. Uh, but there's also where, uh, and, and many other things, there's uh, punishment. Strict, strict liability aspects, meaning it doesn't matter what your intent is. If you do this, this is a consequence. And I think that obvious thing, there are some obvious ones of those. If you bring a gun into the library, I don't care why you brought it in.
Right.
You can't, there's just a prohibition on that. If you come in and drop trow and take a dump on the floor, it doesn't matter if you're mentally challenged. It doesn't matter if you've got uh, bad diarrhea and a phobia of clothing. Um, you can't do that. There are certain things you just can't do. Obviously, those are very strong examples on uh, ends of things. But I think that it, the, the levels, uh, I actually do kind of like in that there should be uh, levels of these are prohibited in the library, period. Um, and what the response is, you know, prohibited, prohibited might be uh, cursing loudly. Uh, you know, uh, and that's just prohibited. But the staff has discretion. If it's a fifteen year old kid and, you know, a giant hook falls on their floor, their foot, and they say, oh, you know, you give them a warning.
Here's the thing, though, let me just, that's the example of, you know, um, loud, talking out loud. There are people who they can't help it. They are more than willing to, you know, they need to be reminded, you know, Crystal, you're talking aloud, it's too loud. Um, this is a person who uses a computer, she needs the resources, she uses the library, she's a patron.
So you have discretion.
Well, but you just said, I have to have a list that's prohibited, they did this, and that, that there's just, I mean, unless it's a really bad thing, there's almost, there's always these little bits, you know, and, and now it's not fair because I made you go because you talk out loud. And now I'm not making you go. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just hard. I mean, I don't know necessarily what.
There has to be, but again, that, that goes back to intention.
Yeah.
So if you're, uh, that's why I said, there's some things that are thoroughly prohibited. You cannot, uh, you know, excrete in the library.
That's my main issue right now.
Yeah, well, exactly. You can't, you can't bring a gun, you can't bring a knife, you can't smoke. Doesn't that, those are non, those are strict liability. Everything else has to do with intent and, and that's where you get discretion. If someone is swearing because they have Tourette's, they, they, the doctor's note that says, I have Tourette's, I can't, I can't help it, then you can maybe request that they be in a different part of the library, but.
So let me just, uh, uh, again, the, I, I'm sorry, I have to use this graphic example, but this is the exact example. Um, we had a woman who a year ago um, defecated in the library, not on purpose. We banned her for a year because we said absolutely not, this is totally unacceptable. We have spent the last twelve months every single day dealing with her. She comes in, she, I mean, I mean, the, the amount of effort and trouble that have gone into banning her for the absolutely no activity is so much worse, right? And that's this discretion, it's the, the list of things that are absolutely not is things we would all, I mean, you know, right? It's like you're hurting someone, it's a crime, but there's all these other things. The, the, it has been a nightmare with this woman. We much, and we, we did, we ended her ban early. We're just like, we can't take it anymore, let her come in. I'd rather have her in than out, you know, because it's, it's so disruptive. Um.
How did she defecate in the library unintentionally?
I don't ask, I mean, I, I mean, just trust me, you know, and she had, she had an accident, you know, I don't know.
With your clothes on?
Yes, it was weird.
Well, that, that, then that, that's fine. I'm talking, when I'm saying a strict liability, if you take off your, remove your clothing and then excrete.
Well, that would be the removing the clothing. I mean, the clothing piece would take care of it right there.
But so, so that's one of the things that, that's what I would ask is that you focus on what are the things that it does not matter why you do that? If you do these things, they are strictly prohibited regardless of intent. Those should have a, a structured uh, response. But everything else, I think, should be based, and as John said, uh, up to staff to determine the severity of the incident, including the, the intent or lack of intent in the act.
Mind and Kenny? Go ahead. I just wanted to, a few things. One is just responding, Kathy, to what you just shared about this example. I mean, I do sort of feel like it's important that the enforcement piece is also addressed through revising the policies because it shouldn't be on your staff to not be able to enforce whatever consequence um, is being given to someone. So I feel like it's, you know, I know we talked about like, who else needs to get involved? Like in the municipal code, it talks about I think like there can be site, you know, you can change it to have citations or different things um, to make it more enforceable. And I, so I think just like the enforcement piece is important. The other point I just wanted to make is like, you know, I think generally for me, whom I'm a little concerned with, I totally hear everything you and your team are saying. And I do think empowering staff who are doing the work day to day to feel like they can do whatever they need to do and giving them discretion and trusting them is important. And I want to balance that with what I think are like equity issues. Like, there's a lot of bias and things that come into play of like, oh, well, that's a teenager, that's okay, or that's my neighbor down the street and she was upset and rude to me, but I'm not going to kick her out. But that's an unhoused person who's being loud or being rude to you and I'm going to kick them out. So I just like, remain a little concerned about sometimes, I think, when you have really consistent, like, standards. It may not make common sense to some people, but like, that's why they're there, it's standardized, so it applies to everyone. Um, so I just wanted to say that. At the end of the day, I defer to you and your, your librarians and your staff because of like, Red's are the other ones that have to deal with this every day and you understand the nuances. But I just want to make sure that we're like thinking about unintended consequences because I think that is where like, what I heard before is giving sometimes too much discretion brings a lot of like, a lot of thinking about these fifty different factors to determine the consequence.
I guess it's not so much discretion as it is um identifying what are those other factors that you consider?
Yes.
Besides just the behavior. Um, so not just, oh, I think this, if, you know, you would have some kind of way of you know, using that matrix to come up with an equitable thing. I, I mean, we, I agree, this is the big concern for us as well. The reality is we're using more discretion now than we would if we had something that helped us parse that out. Um. Yeah, I mean, I feel like it's sort of, y- y- yeah. I, I, we have concerns too about how difficult, uh, is it harder? I guess it comes down to that. Um, it's probably a little bit of work to kind of control the, the discretion, right? Because now the discretion is just, it's not on paper, we just do it.
Hmm.
Um, so your choice is put it in levels, not really ever do those exactly because that's just not the reality. And so you're using discretion or acknowledge that you're gonna have to use your discretion, but what, in what areas? Like what are you allowed to be, have that discretion around? It's not just, oh, I think this person is really nice most of the time, you know, it's is, is it on purpose? Is it, is it repeat? Again, y- you know, what is severity? I mean, that's the, you know, what is severity? And I think um, I do like the idea of having some kind of a statement about we do, we do not tolerate, you know, abuse of staff or other customers, you know, whatever that is. Um, and that, that, that's just an absolutely no, um, no question, whether you did it on purpose or not, right? Like, something like that right up front. I do like that because I think it's important to communicate that, you know, we expect this certain level of stuff.
Yeah. Okay, so that is the point of agreement is start, I think everyone agrees with that. And then Kenny go, but we can note that, that would be something we all, I think, agree to at least for this, that stuff.
Um, yeah, it's, it seems like what we're struggling with is not necessarily the behavior, but the consequences or penalties for that behavior. Um, and I guess a couple of ways to address it is um, one, if you're putting it in categories as opposed to levels, maybe incorporate some of the levels, meaning um, in these categories, violation this, you know, you're just deranged of, of penalties and it's a discretion of who's ever deciding that, to implement that. Or, and another way is like, the way HOA is doing is, is take the discretion away from the staff on some things so they don't have to be the bad guy and be facing blowback. Maybe, I, because I don't know how often you have to implement discipline. I don't know if it's, you know, twice a day where you've got to suspend somebody, or is it twice a month and where there's more serious cases? Uh, maybe that comes before us with a report from staff. And just like an HOA board would vote on, on the discipline and decide. So the staff's not the bad guy and at least it's it's not their discretion, so they don't have to be torn by that. I could be wrong about this, but my feeling is, is that the implication of the, the timeframe is that staff needs to know when do, when do we have the authority to tell someone, you must leave the library now? And tell them how long it is until you can come back. I don't believe that for any of these, there's really the opportunity to say, okay, you can hang out here for the next month until the, 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 uh, the library board of trustees meets and then they'll vote on what happens to you. Um, the, I think it's an immediate necessity. So I love the idea of one level of intention does not matter, strict liability. Then another where there's uh, the discretion of, is this something that even has to be enforced at all at the moment? And, and if so, what is the level of, of uh, punishment, for lack of a better word? Uh, and that would be based on things like uh, intentionality, uh, severity, uh, uh, repetition, um, danger uh, or to the library and or patrons and or staff. Um, because again, some things are going to be like, okay, you technically broke the rule, but no harm, no foul. And then, but okay, you technically broke the rule seven times today. And while there was no harm, no foul, you're obviously showing a disrespect to staff. So how do we know you're not going to ratchet things up? So maybe the severity has to be ratcheted up based on the repetition. Who's the decision maker? The staff. Yeah, we're fine.
I have a comment after.
Yeah, I guess I'm, in, in this policy, there is only a verbal warning, there's no like written warning.
Um, we issuing ban letters, but it's a little hard to do when someone is screaming at you and.
Yeah, but. Some other things. You like double sided, you would keep that written, like, you know, so I'm thinking in some kind of head with some discretion, but also having respect to the rules. You could have, hey, like, you have three verbal warnings and then it becomes a written warning and then it goes into our file and then that results into something. So there's discretion on, like, is this something that's habitual and is enough to rise to a level where your staff needs to write a report about it?
We write a report.
Yeah, everything?
Yeah, I mean, I think that um, again, it's not sequential.
So easy, yeah.
Right? Uh, you know, you're going to get a verbal warning if the circumstance is allowed for that. That's, that would be our top priority would be to give you an opportunity. We want you to give us a work here. We want you to follow the rules and take advantage of what we have to offer. Um, but the reality is that you, you're not necessarily going to get a verbal warning, depending on what it is that you did. And I, I think that um, I, I, I don't know about this, but part of this kind of decision tree, which might not be actually part of the policy, that's the procedure side. It could kind of take these behaviors out of the groupings and make them more levely, right? Like, so again, you're, if I have a little decision tree and it says, you know, what, you know, whatever, like, like something we might think is a level one in general, it could, it could say that in our decision tree, but we're, we're not tying ourselves into that, tying that specific thing always to the specific. Tying that specific thing always to the specific penalty. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's definitely a, an issue. And I don't know if that's okay. Like, I don't, again, I don't know if the policy from a city attorney's perspective has to be really explicit about if you do this, you get exactly this. But if you look at our policy, the municipal code now, i- it's very ambiguous and, well, they did a little of this, but they did that. Um, is it thirty days? Like it's I don't know. I mean, I don't know what a city attorney would say, but that would definitely be a factor. Um, if we draft something and run that by them and they say, oh yeah, this is too, too amb- ambiguous, even with your procedure, like even if you're following a written procedure for you know, determining what the consequence should be based on what they did, you know, whatever. They may, that may not be good enough. Yeah, maybe we have to do it in a very hard way. But like you said, I mean, I mean, Kenny, I, I hear what you're saying about take that burden off the staff, but you can't take it off the staff. I mean, we're there, you have to decide, you know?
I know, and things that are immediate, but maybe some things, I don't know if there's things that you don't make a decision on a suspension immediately.
It's all, I mean, uh, the, the goal, the first priority is to get the person out of the building. Right? So we're not gonna dither about how long are you banned for? We're gonna get them out. And then, then we go back and figure out, okay, what do we think? Um, you know, that, what is, what is the consequence? The other thing about the municipal code now is that it is, there's this cumulative aspect, which I don't know if that's something that the city attorney thinks is really important, because that too, it's not entirely clear whether you're allowed to, i- it sort of implies that you, you, you get a thirty day and then you get another thirty day and another, you, you don't, you can't just go to ninety days. At least it's not clearly, it's not explicit, I think, and that's a problem for us too. Because it's, again, the behaviors are not always, you know, if I have someone doing something and they've done it once and now they come back thirty days later and they do it again, I'm just giving them another thirty days and they're, you know, you, you know, and you, I don't know, it's, that's, that's a complicated piece too.
So, I mean, I, I, my comment is that I'm hearing that there are some areas where you um determine the level of severity, right? And just naming those maybe in the next memo, um, the, how many times whether it was intentional or not, whatever else the staff uses to judge that. I feel like the best way, you're gonna just have to like list it all out of what you ideally want. And then take it to the city attorney and say like, how is this possible? Can we make this happen? Because otherwise we've been constantly keeping in this conversation, well, the law, well, currently says this and then this currently says that, this is not, like, we have to stop the like yes, it's not, it's not working. So can we just like come up, can you all take what this started and say like, you know, this is what ideally we would like, we would like some kind of decision tree. This, this will help us, we'd like it to match this way, and then maybe bring it full circle, like, is this allowable?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the objective is, but, but to get your input. I mean, it's a pretty big difference to go from the, I mean, again, the biggest concern I think we all have is about being fair. Um, and so if we've taken it out of this level thing where you say you did exactly this, so you're gonna have this happen to you, which then it's not done, but um, tha- that's the big change. So I wanted to have that conversation with you and then hopefully we would come out of that and be able to go and get that city attorney to weigh in on that piece of it.
I, I think there needs to be offenses that are graded. And this is where you provide the criteria for grading the offense. And then you have a policy that is this behavior could be level two to four consequence, depending on the grading. Here's the set of criteria that will be used and documented for grading that in the reports. So now you actually have protected grading criteria that, that enforces the range of consequences. And, and then you have staff trained, you know, to understand internal bias and, and, and to look at equity things, so that as they apply those factors, they're, they're trained to do that in a way that's, you know, that's fair.
What kind of, what do you think those factors are? I mean, that's the piece, right? I mean, I think intent.
I- intent, severity, uh repetition.
I mean, those are the three that are.
Uh, danger, uh, uh, do staff do?
Well, subjective percent, I, I think staff's, I mean, you know, some people get off a vibe that is really hostile. And that can be mental illness, so that's a mitigating factor, but it's also staff safety issue.
Yeah, I mean, safety is the, I, I, it doesn't matter why you're behaving in a dangerous way, that's not.
I have a couple of quick suggestions. One, uh, we keep saying decision tree and charts and things. I think the magic word for that is rubric, because it's a broad enough term, but it, it is that whole thing, if this, then that, right? Um, how do, how do I judge severity? I follow the rubric. So, um, uh, but the, I think that what I'm hearing and what I'm thinking is that whatever the end policy is, it should include a statement that says staff is empowered to uh request and if necessary, uh, uh, secure removal of any patron that is violating, and, and this would be where John has, anything in, you know, the, from level two down. Um, because if you feel unsafe or if uh one or more patrons have come to you and said, credibly said that they feel unsafe because of behavior uh or somebody's trying to, throwing chairs against the wall, you should be able to ask them to leave and if necessary, secure, have the security guard ask them to leave and if necessary, call the police to have them removed. Because the number one important issue here is safety of our staff and of our patrons.
And I think we already, I mean, we already have that, that's, that's.
So everything else is window dressing to, to an extent, because as long as you have the ability to remove somebody, then we can, to Kenny's point, there can be a decision made of is that behavior something that we have to, because I don't think you're gonna throw down right then, you're gone for a year. Right? You're gonna, you have to leave and then we, we know who they are, they have a library card. Um, and then you can uh make the determination and, and a letter can be sent, if that way it's documented with their report and all of that. Uh, saying, based on your behavior on this date, which was cumulative with these, because you have reports of every time these dates, you know, um, I, I was arguing with somebody earlier today, I can't fire anyone in the state of California. Well, you can. You just need to document a, a, a repetition of, of issues and then you can, uh, you can terminate someone. So if you, if you're able to document the repetition of the same issue, you know, lemon law kind of thing, you did it five times, gone.
Yeah, the, the, when we do letters now, we basically, um, we don't really explain the length. We, we say you did this, this and this, on this day and this day and this day, um, and that violates our rules. And so you're banned and you can come back and whatever, like we don't say you did something this bad, so you're banned for this long. It's just this kind of up to one year. So we're not even now kind of explaining to people why they're getting fifteen days, why they're getting thirty days. That's not something, that's not a conversation that more information we're giving them.
Um, I just wanted to, just going back to the original draft that Kenny and I put together. Um, I just wanted to point out, I, I am not a fan of a huge fan of this level system, because I think it's clunky. However, I think one of the reasons I like, I liked it is a lot of libraries use that and I think it grew. I think it communicates to the patron like the level of behavior and con- and type of consequences. And if you read like level one and two, it says maybe suspended, like it doesn't say, oh, you know, you're disruptive, you're suspended for three months. There's still always discretion in level one and two. Three is the one that's like, you do this, you're out for a year, you will be suspended for a year. So even in this, there's you know, discretion for staff. Um, but I do think it communicates to the patron, like if you're disruptive, like you may be out for three months. If you damage my property, it could be up to a year and it like lets them know. I, I think to me, like the communication aspect is also important, so people understand like what the consequence, consequence can be. But I agree with Dean and the council member of like, I, I have it now, send it to you. I can remember I told you, I have like a rubric that the county uses. Hospital staff and it like defines like what is like, you know, low, moderate, severe. It's a totally different area, but like, um, I think it, it's like a point system so that you can figure out like how severe is this or if it's not at risk.
I think you sent me that and the, and the staff and I, we were talking about that. And then how hard are we making it, right? I mean, that's part of the problem now, is it's hard to interpret the rules and, and figure out according to our current system, what is the consequence? And so we want to find some little ground where we have a rubric and a way to use those criteria that's not, now I have to, you know, take you know what I mean? Like get too complicated maybe with, like, like you said, ranks, but that was what we were talking about, like is it on a level of one to four? You know, and then you add up a number and now you're in this much trouble, you know, like I just don't know what level of.
And you test it?
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could try different.
Well, this is where management comes in and sets consistency in how you apply. Right? And so there's a review process, you have the criteria written down, here's how we actually apply them in situation.
I was wondering in all these lists, well, I've seen it in some of the comments of the notes and then linked to like the internet policy, but the amount of times have come in here and your staff is freaking out, because someone's like looking at something on the computer that's highly suggestive, but not child pornography or something like, you know, that I'm wondering where that might be able to be folded into an explicit rule, because I feel like that's something that you often deal with, whether it's just that those computers or if it's that someone using the internet here on their personal computer. But I just don't know if I saw that spelt out anywhere, but I did hear internet policy. I'm wondering if a bullet point would be important in this kind of scoping of like, hey, if you break our internet policy, that is under this category?
Yeah, I think we have that like for, um, yes, I think we have places where it says you're not allowed to do this, but see the policy, you know? So you have like a high level thing, but the detail is in the other.
And then two, I just want to say, I really like the idea that it kind of comes up a couple of times of having a kids and teens um rule set or signage or separate thing, because that does seem like it does two things that really keeps the kids on notice, but also the adults that may or may not be traversing that space, that this is, you know, a special space that has a different set of, not a different set of rules, but different procedure thing.
And it's different in terms of like one of the things you're trying to negotiate is access, so it's not like a behavior, it's like you can only be in there if you're with your child, you know, there's this whole thing. And so it's not like a behavior or a rule even, it's just, it's just a different kind of a different way of, of, a different format, a different, it's, it's, yeah. I mean, yes, there are going to be consequences if you um, so yes, but it's much more about um just trying to manage that. That's not usually something that I don't know, it's just, it's different, right? So it has its own little pocket of stuff. But I think, um, you know, in the policy, the, the, the policy is you have to follow, you have to abide by the internet policy. You know what I mean? Like in this policy, it refers and says, these other policies also all apply.
Um, I don't want to forget, I'm, uh, Minnson.
Um, what are your next steps, Kathy?
Well, based on this feedback, um, we would uh go back and finish our our categories, because like I said, the other thing we, we really looked at is the actual um the language, right? And are we setting ourselves up for again, ambiguity or um, or is it a judgment is, is the way we're describing? I mean, there are many things like that. If I was like, you can't say that, that's, that's that's your, you know what I mean? It's just not written, right? And we also went through them trying to, like, okay, if this happened, um, you know, what, what would this be like? And thinking through each thing, I feel real like an actual thing happening and kind of that helped us see places where, oh, well, we can't say it like that, because that will do this, or kind of these unintended consequences. So trying really hard to get down to the best way to word these things is part of it. And we're, we've been doing that and we have a long, you know, we need to go through this and finish and track, undo the track changes, so we can see where we ended up. Um, so I think that I think that I would like to go forward with the categories, but trying to address these issues of discretion, equity, um, y- you know, how are we again, how are we making that connection between the, the thing and the consequence? How hard is it for the staff to do that fairly? Or in general, I mean, is it becoming so onerous to try to make that call with too many criteria involved? But I don't think it's that many criteria, like I, you know, right? Like, uh, we, for me, it's, it's, it really is, it's intent. How often? And right now we have nothing about frequency. So someone could come in here every day and, you know, do something and doing that every day is just as bad as doing one horrible thing one day, you know? So I think frequency intent, um, and again, these are not the things that are clearly not acceptable. It's, it's the things where there's you know, yeah.
The county has a rubric for this stuff?
No, it's a big, totally different for, uh, thing that I work on with the child welfare system, but I was just giving it to Kathy as an example. Because though there is a rubric system that county staff use to determine like risk factors for families, but it's just really clear and there's definitions. So I was just using it as an example. Yeah, I just wanted to say Kathy, like, everything at least I'm sharing is just feedback. Like, I feel really strongly like your staff should be the ones to, they do the work every day. So, you know, I trust them to figure out however they want to do it and I just don't want them to feel I think it's overwhelming, it's like not going to be perfect, so I just don't want them to be paralyzed by like, what about all these hundred things that we have to consider to make the perfect rules? And it's like, it's just not gonna.
Right, I mean, that's, right, I mean, yes, we're, we're, we are going to do the best we can. I've asked a lot of people, um, I have someone send me something and I said, so what did you learn? And, you know, she said, yeah, right away. We were like, oh, we shouldn't, we should have, you know, right away, something clearly would have, had been worded differently or what, what should we have done differently? So I just want to minimize really blatant, obvious things like that happening, where we come back and we go, oh my, we should have seen that, like, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna over, overdo it, but it, I think it is a useful exercise to be like, what, what actually that be like if that? You know, if, if it's worded this way and we have, we say to someone, you broke this rule and they say back, you know, like what is that gonna be like? So, um, and again, just and, and shortening, right? Tightening it up, so we don't have ten different kinds of putting your feet on the chairs. And, you know, again, what's it come down to? Is it about the space? Don't take space up, that you should, you know, like you don't need ten different things that all boil down to taking up space. Um, so we're just trying to get it clean and tight and short, um, and clear. Um, so yeah, so that, that would be my next step is trying to you know, finish it in this category way instead of the level way, but still make sure that we're dealing with this, um, the, the two issues. One is that we have a way to barely determine consequences, um, that is not even more burdensome to staff than trying to use levels where you're hemmed in and then now you're making discretionary things that don't feel fair, you know?
Yeah, I just, just uh going forward thing, so I mean, it, it, I just want to like synthesize it, it's, you want to go with categories instead of levels and now work with regard to how do we use our discretion with regard to penalties and, and consequences and fairly deal with everyone. I mean, do you, do you want feedback from Min and I on that, how to work that in there or wait for?
I think, I think Annie's right, that we should just get it out and send it to the city attorney next. Because if the city attorney says, yeah, this is too ambiguous, then you'll never get away with it. I, I mean, I don't know, John's like.
There's not that much law on this.
Oh, there's not, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna encourage a lot of deference to what.
Good to know. Yeah, because I mean, that is a question. There's even things like we have to ask about, you know, if there's a rule about loitering. Well, loitering is a, is a criminal, you know, like how do we, I don't know, there's things like that, um, that we need to and things that I'm not sure, like proselytizing and political stuff, like freedom of speech, like there's some things we have to find out.
Yeah, there'll be more attorney input on that.
So there's some things like that that still need to be kind of um, cleaned up. But also, some of that is covered by stop bothering other people uninvited. You know, so do you need a whole thing about exactly? So do you need a whole thing about exactly what you can't do? I mean, maybe there are rules about public facilities and politics, at least at election day, there are. But um, yeah, you know, again, boiling it down, do we really need all these rules that are, it's already covered by this other thing? And there were a lot of things like that where, well, we already, that's covered. We don't have to say that because it's over there already. So I'm hoping it's going to be a lot shorter than what we've had in the past.
Really quick question. Separate from the policies, have you seen a change in the behavior of patrons at the library now that we've had this security guard for like pretty much? So that's done, and that's been having a positive impact on your staff?
Yeah, it's huge. Um, their, their um, level of, you know, anxiety, burnout, stress is way, way, way down. It's a total deterrent. Um, it really is the deterrent. I mean, he's not doing anything different than what we do. Less things are happening. You know, they've been moving all the uh, the back log of the log of issues into the new system. And Olivia said, I mean, it was like you said, Kenny, is it twice a day or is it once a month? It, it day, you know, three times a day, four times a day, they were just every day. And that's just not the case. It's like once a week. So it's huge having a security guard. And we did ask in the budget for additional funds to cover, because we're only covering like two thirds of the open hours. Um, and if you look at the statistics.
Cost benefit is there.
Yeah, things are happening in those, the third, you know? So that's been huge and kind of, um, yeah, like this whole, the, the need for this. We still have it, but it's definitely changed with that deterrent in place.
Uh, I'm glad that that's at least helping alleviate while this isn't.
Yes.
Um, so categories, maybe a rubric or some way to determine unfairly consequences?
Yeah.
I would say like just telling it out a little, you know, like something happens, let's look at our current policy, let's look at this new thing we drafted. You know, oh, it's still not this. I mean, that's the only way you're going to know whether it gives you clarity or not. Besides like the, the imaginary consequence, like what's actually happening too. But um, can we see it next month?
Um, it depends on, you mean after the city attorney has seen it?
Um. Seen it before?
Um, I mean, what, what do you think timing wise? I just didn't tell, like, I'm sick of this, just go get an answer or if you're.
Well, I'm, I'm just really curious. I just feel like you're spinning on the city attorney piece and.
Not really. I'm just, we just haven't, we don't have time, as you know, it's just the time to spend, to get it ready. And I think we're, we're pretty close. I think that this big issue of levels versus like totally wiping out the whole concept of levels and doing this other way needed to be discussed. Um, I think because it does have all these implications. Um, and if we've made a decision about, okay, let's try going forward with that, we can fairly easily finish this off. Because we've already done that I haven't done. Um, there's still, you know, again, there's lots of little, what about this? And what about that? But it's basically done. Um, so yeah, I mean, I could, if I can, you could look at the same thing that goes to the city attorney, if the city attorney hasn't come back to me yet, but I, I feel like, I mean, council member doesn't think maybe it's going to be a thing, but you know, if we go to the city attorney and they say, no, this is not okay, I don't want to spend, they send me back to the drawing board, then we shouldn't have wasted a whole conversation about it again, you know? Although you could look at it just out of, you know, veracity, like here's where we ended up.
But maybe just because I know there's so many things on your plate, how do people feel about Kathy revising it um, to like just the little things that we talked about right now to get to next iteration and sending it to us and the city attorney at the same time?
Yeah, I can even just email.
The next meeting is in four weeks, so I know that's a lot of time for you.
Well, and then you can, you know, yeah, because then you're totally, it's fine to email.
Okay.
Me, you know, you can just email and say, yeah, I don't like this or this seems funny. That'd be great. And then meanwhile, the city attorney can be looking at the general idea, right?
Yeah, we can discuss it more. I feel like then we'll have more time to review it before the next meeting too. So then we can um, kind of see what other concerns and it's not all solidified while the city attorney is still reviewing it too.
Okay.
I would assume that he, that they would probably need at least a week, maybe two weeks to get feedback, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll put this on the agenda for next month to um, review, but not necessarily be ready to like approve anything like. Other comments, questions, final thoughts? Uh, community, uh, library community center site planning project updates?
I have more information than Dean, but Dean, do you have?
I mean.
Things you want to share?
There wasn't a meeting, so there would.
But did you see what, did you see my email about, about when I said there's not going to be a meeting?
I just saw that there wasn't going to be a meeting. I was leaving town. Was there something in there that I missed?
Yeah, so kind of a big development.
I saw it on the phone.
Yeah. Kind of a big development, which is that the, the city manager, we have a new city manager, as you know, highly competent, um, very getting a lot done for the city and really we're on a great track. Um, he met with the consultants and the project team. And his concern is that uh, we're doing something that, that what we're looking at is too pie in the sky and we're back where we've been before, where we've, we've looked at something that's never, it's too expensive, it's not possible. So he wants to make sure that the consultant comes back with an option that is within a price point that he thinks possible. Um, and I think he thinks that price point is like around twenty million dollars, but it's definitely moving around. Um, so that was his direction to the, to group four, is that we need to make sure we have a, a truly, not that we would, not that it would be the right thing to do, but that it's, the city has said or says ultimately, yes, we could do that. Um, and I think that the issue is right with the committee is we've been encouraged to go do, you know, look at what's, what do you want, you know? Um, thinking that people thought we could raise the money, but I think he's just not comfortable with we don't know if we could raise money. So at the same, and we've been telling people this too, but at the same time, the city is looking at all the in other infrastructure things and they're now talking about doing a ba- a bond for streets. And then, you know, would the community, they'll do a lot of feasibility and testing with the community, but you know, would the community be willing to pull ten million out of that for this project or um, like there's just a lot we don't know about how much money is actually available. So I think that his, his thinking is that, again, we get this range. We had sort of eliminated that low range because we're like, what's the point? Like, you know, we can't. If we're not meeting the needs, yeah, like if we're not going to meet these needs, why would we even bother? And that may still be true, that might, you know, it's down the road, that may be something, but, but we would still have the, the levels, right? We would have this, what we would, what we would love to have and have been moving toward and thinking about. And that's an option. So if somebody shows up with X amount of money, you know, it could be, it could be done. But I think his concern is um, that he, and he's heard from the community, we've done this before, nothing ever happens. And he doesn't want us to be in that place again. So he wants to have at least one option that he believes that we could do. And it's probably not our dream option. And it's probably not even the best use of our money, you know, like your, your value for your dollar. Because if we, if we renovate or keep this thing building, a lot of money is just going to go into fixing, bringing it up. And yeah, like um, it's, it would be, you, you would get more value for, for the dollar building, a new building. So then maybe you're in a place where you're like, well, for twenty million, we could renovate this. For thirty five million, we could start fresh and, you know, I mean, there's just going to be a lot of fiddling around. And I think, um, but the main thing is that he gave the consultant direction to go back and give us an option that is within a price range that he believes is, you know, something that could actually happen. That's, that's the latest. So the next meeting, that meeting, um, we've had two meetings that included the city manager and the assistant city manager with the project team. And we have another one next week in preparation for the ad hoc committee meetings. So making sure that, um, and the, and, and the city manager and the assistant city manager are going to come to that ad hoc meeting. And basically that's going to be their, going to be their, um, their opportunity to talk to the committee about this and what I'm sort of saying, but how they see it. Um, and of course, also the consultant will bring back these options that he's requested. So I think it's sort of just re kind of calibrating this idea that let's just get it all out there and get our, our dream um, versus let's make sure we have enough options that we can, we have the flexibility. Um, and I think it's, you know, we've had so much turnover that we just didn't have this direction. I mean, of course, it makes perfect sense. Like you, you don't want to plan something for no reason at all. Um, and the consultant said, yeah, we've been asking all along, you know, for how much, what do we have? And we've said, we don't know. We don't know how much we have. We don't know how much we could raise. We don't know. We think we might get this, you know, we have ideas, but we, we just don't know. And the city manager wants to make sure there's one where we do know. Like, we could do this, provided we get direction from, you know, council to move forward with something. But, and, and then again, it is tied in now to this uh, bond for streets that would be hopefully the next election. Um, so that's, that's the latest. So that ad hoc meeting, um, is that September fourth, I think? Is going to be a big one with a lot of good information, I think, um, for everyone, for the community, for everyone.
Sorry, Kathy, just clarifying question. So the consultant is going to come back with multiple options, including twenty million?
Well, they already worked doing multiple options, but the, all of the options were, were hot. Yeah, I mean, it was sort of they were variations of pie in the sky, the low pie in the sky to the high pie in the sky and.
I don't think any of them, I would not call any of them pie in the sky. They, they had a, use that one word again, they had a rubric that they were applying to determine uh, space uh, that would be reasonable to consider for a community our size, for the buildings that we're doing, taking account of, of uh, it was a twenty percent cut in uh, square footage, because we're going to have certain facilities that'll serve both very all three uh, functions of the proposed building. And then looking at a range of typical cost per square foot to get to a determination based upon size. So I don't know that I would say they're pie in the sky. It's just a question of whether we want to scale down the, the size of the facility. Uh, as opposed to the cost, because we can't scale down the cost. They, well, this, we can to an extent of what materials we use and whether we have lots of windows or don't have lots of things like that. But uh, generally it's a cost per square foot within these ranges. And so it's really the size that I think is going to be more impacted than anything else.
And I think the city manager has a lot of concerns about just um, construction costs, four percent every year. So if we decide on a forty million dollar project today, by the time it's moved on design work and construction documents. Yeah, it's like, it's just, I, I think he's just, does not think that we should count on being able to get that money. If we can, great, but he, he does not want to come out of this without a uh, without one viable option. So that makes sense to me. I mean, it's, I, I'm, it's not the option that I would like, but I mean, it makes sense to me that um, he, he doesn't want to come back to the community.
He's taking into consideration that the state has no money to give us because.
They are. I mean, they have a consultant that's looking, you know, looking at all of this and trying to figure out where money is. There may be some money related to the seniors, the community center, but the library funding, which we already knew, right? That was a once in a generation four hundred and thirty six million dollars they had like two years ago. Um, we weren't ready to be part of that.
But aside from the thing, you know, we had a situation where um, Mike Fong gave twenty five million dollars to Alhambur for the exact same thing that we're talking to do here.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
I, I think that there's still the intent that people would make those asks, but I think um, the state isn't as you know, flush as it was when that happened. But I, we actually had a, a call this week um, with these like fundraising uh, grant kind of consultants and it made me look back at my, I had made a list of all the kind of earmarks for these types of projects. And there were a lot, you know, I mean, I think even when the state is not, you know, in great shape, there's probably still some room, right, for people to either maybe not you're, you know, fifty percent, but boost you over that edge, you know, give you that extra five million or whatever. I don't know, but again, this is all um, conjecture. And I think he, I think the city manager also thinks, I think we've been told or believed that the site plan would be kind of enough to get some kind of fundraising thing off the ground. Like that would be enough to say, we did our needs assessment, the community wants to do this, this is what we want to do. This is the cost estimate, which the consultant says is very accurate. I mean, you know, they tried and true that, that, that the number that they're going to come up with, even though it doesn't include the actual design work, is pretty accurate. Um, I think we've been under the impression or told or whatever that that would be enough to go forward. But I think the city attorney thinks we, uh, city attorney, sorry, city manager thinks we would need to do more design work.
Oh, I, I, I'm fully on board with that. I don't think we're going to be able to get significant amount of money without a mark.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, so you are on the same page with the city manager.
No, I, I, that's where I've been all along. It's just a question of, do we have the will to go forward to that next step?
Right.
To get there, to then go and fundraise and now what might be feasible, and I don't know because I don't know the criteria, is can we put in our applications for grants from Mike Fong and from Sasha Perez? And depending on the, there are various people that we would go to, to make those asks. Obviously, we're not getting any money from the federal government.
I mean, I think my understanding, right, is that Janet have, the mayor has had some of these conversations with some of these elected officials.
I'm not for Mike Fong all the time.
Yes, like they know.
I'm not going to let and forget.
They, they know we're working on this and I, my understanding is that they say, yeah, when you're ready and you know how much you want, then come and tell me.
What's ready?
Yeah. Yeah. What does ready mean?
What is ready?
Yeah.
Is, is a site plan with uh, intention from the city uh, council to move forward to design? Is that sufficient for us to go, tell us how much you can give us or, or are they going to say no?
Start needs a lot. We need to have something that's actionable. We have to have a budget condition, situation that's where they're actually giving out discretionary grants. And then you have to have the connection through your electives. So we're working on the electives very, very strongly. Um, and then as the, as the plan comes to an actionable phase, hopefully we'll, the budget in one, in one year will allow for discretionary grants and then the start of a whole one. But it's really hard to predict.
Yeah. It's like a lot of things moving along on the same track and it's, you know, are they going to kind of come together? But I think it should be a good meeting and I think it'll be a good discussion. I mean, I, I mean, I was just hopeful. I thought, oh, we could, you know, I mean, I guess we've been sort of given the impression that there's probably private money out there that people are willing to support us and. Much and yeah, so we may, maybe some people have been overly optimistic. Yeah.
So we're not going to get a hundred million dollars from someone, but uh, there was also about last meeting, we did have a, a, a continued lively discussion regarding the um, what the generalized design might be. Uh, there was some feedback. It's very significant feedback from people who hadn't actually read the um, the proposal and just looked at the picture. Um, uh, they were concerned that the senior center is entirely on the second floor and how that would work. If, if what the second floor means, considering the grade and things like that, take into consideration. But uh, it, all of that is completely funded for right now. We're, we're mostly trying to determine what would be the square footage uh, and what would be inside, used inside that square footage and what would be um, single use or shared use of that so that we can actually make a determination of what the final square footage would be.
And they did come, come back to the project team with a, a number of adjustments to those that showed addressed all the senior or access points. But that was the meeting that we had with Todd and, and Nick, the assistant city manager, where they said, so go do that other thing. So, so they, they're well able to address those issues that people had about access. Go do that other thing. So so they they're well able to address those issues that people had about access points for seniors.
Okay, so then we'll hear more at the next meeting then.
Yeah.
Be after. Great. Any other questions for September? Um, the updates to libraries, collection, selection and maintenance policy?
So this can be really fast, just so you guys know, you you the board approved this policy in twenty twenty three. There was a state law. Last cycle. That says it's called the the Freedom to React Act and it's essentially trying to. Help libraries resist. Censorship and book challenges and all that. And it's really, I think, about the state kind of taking a stand about. That this is. Yeah, that this is their values. This is our values in California. So we are required to um. Incorporate into these policies. We're required to have a policy, which we do, uh incorporate certain language into the policy. Have it on file with the state librarian. So this is just um, there's, it's the redlined version that shows you the language that we have to add. And then there's just a change is accepted version that. So it. Essentially, it was all things we already had, you know, and none of it is um.
Can't change the words, say the same thing.
Yeah.
We need to approve it, okay?
Uh, no, because the state library has to look at it first. So this is just heads up. I'll send it to them and then as long as they sign off on it, then we would approve it next time. So it's it's just sort of procedural, but I did wanna let you know because we spent a lot of time on this policy at the time. But again, it's it's not. It just had, it was just some word sniffing to kind of work their language into ours and. And take it out where we needed to. So that's all.
I'm glad we were ahead of the curve, but we were already basically.
I know, I was too.
I was like for one, for one spending a lot of time on that and stuff, yes.
Yeah.
The um fiscal year, this next fiscal year, twenty five, twenty six, special tax report?
Yeah, just quickly. Yeah, so the the uh consumer price index for all users came out in July, July fourteenth or something. So they've calculated our our rate. Um, I think it was like uh three point one percent is the CPI about that. So um. We're gonna get about twenty thousand dollars more than we did last year. And I wanna say that the total is like four hundred and, I'm sorry, I this is the my my mind has been on a different topic. But I think it's like four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Am I right? So, you know, it.
Still approximately eighteen percent of.
You know, that's a good question. It's gonna be less because the library's budget is uh seems to be higher this year. I think having to do with uh staffing costs. So it might be a smaller proportion than it has been. And that has been the trend, right? It used to be twenty percent, nineteen, and now it's eighteen. So it might be. Might be eighteen, seventeen, eighteen. I don't, I haven't done the math, but I will. Because the budget will be approved, the cit- well, hopefully, the city uh budget is that. To be presented to the city council for adoption on August twentieth next week. And we've had many, many meetings with the with the council, with the finance commission joint meeting. So it's looking very promising that the budget will get adopted. So once that finalized, then I can do that calculation of. You know, what percentage of our total budget is the parcel tax, but I have done preliminarily. I mean, it meets the required amount, you know, the required amount. That the city has to uh put toward the library's budget. That's not a problem. We're still, there's a huge cushion there, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that's that, just quick FYI.
Um, do you wanna continue with library operations update?
I guess I will make sure you know that Maida Wong retired.
Know it was a plant?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know.
She did not want a big fuss and she's had nothing but a big fuss. So there's been like three newspaper articles.
I was asked to write a letter and like, I didn't really, I don't know that I've ever had any direct.
Maida was like.
And then and then I I was so, oh, Maida doesn't want letters.
I couldn't stop it. It was a train out of the station. I Sally was like, we were getting letters. And I was like, Sally, she doesn't want it. She's like, I already have thirteen letters. I was like, well, I'll ask her if she, I mean, was she gonna say, no, don't do it now? I mean, it was very sweet. The letters are in the paper today. It's very sweet. Yeah, so Maida's gone, which is operationally a big deal, um, you know, trying to. Trying to like redistribute responsibilities. We're not going to uh post that position immediately because we are talking about. The possibly some sort of reorganization in terms of how duties are. Distributed with the intent of trying to get a little more help in the admin side of things, like. And so. The city will be hopefully entering into agreements with the bargaining units. Um, I think in September. And so once that is done, uh, we would be talking about. This idea of the sort of slightly different org chart. And then that would be a proposal that we would take to the city council to see and and the, you know, we have to justify the idea that we have. So that's why we're not posting it, because we're not quite sure what that's gonna look like. So we have to kind of limp along without her. But we have, we have such a strong team of librarians right now. That, you know, there, we'll manage. It's it's a lot, but we'll manage. So Maida's gone. Um, summer reading program was a big success. They don't have their report ready yet, so they'll be ready with that for the friends in September. And we can share that, but they're gonna, I asked them to try to um, they usually provide like a narrative report and I asked. Could we do like a like a newsletter, like something, pictures and, you know, pet subject headings and make it a little bit more um. Entertaining and and, you know, absorbable, but it was a great summer, right?
Yeah, it was great.
The Wednesdays were all packed.
Yeah, those were incredible.
Yeah, it was really great.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we, again, we had a great full staff. You know, from January to the summer and that made the difference is being able to properly prepare. I, other than that, I off the top of my head, I don't know, you know, the 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 staff are working on their twenty twenty six programs. Their last um big public adult program is the silent film. With the accompaniment in October and then they're gonna try to catch up and focus on some other things while we get, as we get to the end of the year. Because they don't have a lot of programs during that time, but we're ticking along.
Any questions? So communications, uh, board president communications. I do wanna also say, I think the security guard is amazing. Like, it's made a huge difference every time I come in and and just generally just whoever is there that is so happy and positive. And I feel like the patrons really enjoy like talking to them too.
Some do, some don't.
Really? There always a conversation, a friendly conversation with someone. Um, but I feel like it's helped a lot. So thank you for counsel and everyone else who made that happen. That's uh been a huge difference for, especially I think for all the families that feel just better.
Yeah, that's good to know, from the like family's perspective, like I don't, they come in and they go in, so I don't know. So that's good to know.
Yeah, so appreciate that. Other communication, Kenny?
Um, not really, nothing substantive, just that I feel like I haven't been here in so long because we didn't have the meeting in July and I think I missed the two before that. So it's good to be back and have some good conversation and enjoy it.
Do you have a quote? Should we save you for last?
I do. First, I wanna say I really appreciate the discussion we had about the behavior policy. Uh, it's a really hard thing and I thought it was, all of those ideas expressed by everybody were wonderful. And then looking for quotes about libraries, they fall into two categories. One of them is how important libraries are and the other one is how wonderful libraries are. And I think whenever it is that we make our pitch to the public, both of those things have to be emphasized. Here's something from Albert Einstein. The only thing you absolutely have to know is the location of the library. And then this is Erasmus. I'm trying to think when Erasmus was, sixteenth century, I believe. Your library is your paradise. There we go.
Thank you.
Now I went to the bathroom and missed it. I just wanted to say I grew up here, so please let her know. She was here when.
Yeah.
I was a teenager.
Oh, really?
Like she was your library here. Drowned soda in the children's. We brought candy, we made a lot of nourishment.
That's limitations.
So.
You're writing a policy?
I know, yeah, that's why I'm like, anyway.
I mean, thirty seven years is a long time, right? I mean, I'm surprised we don't have grandchildren of people that were her.
I wanted to tell her when we were talking in the um, when we met to talk about the rules, but I don't know. It it annoys me when people are like, when, you know. Yes, so I didn't say anything, but she's wonderful. So like, congrats for me.
She'll be, I mean, she lives in town, so. We'll see her.
Thinking any communications?
Only that I I want to again commend the friends for the the wonderful programs that they put on over the summer and assisted the library to put on over the summer. Because, you know, as per the quotes that Ed uh gave us now and and, you know, most months. The library is and always should be a community center. Uh, and as I'm very fond of saying, this library is almost the geographic center of our town and it's certainly. A cultural center of our town. So. Anything that we can do to uh continue and to expand that aspect of it as a community hub. Uh, is vital and I think that's part of the point of the ad hoc uh program is to. Uh, to expand the library into library, community center and senior center and making it. Literally the the cultural center for everyone in town for everything.
Thank you. Um, city council liaison communications?
Uh, council has done provisional across the board uh wage increases for staff. As we come to the end of our bargaining for your MOUs and we start another round, we need to stay. Uh, relatively competitive and so some kind of an immediate provisional uh raise was recommended. As we go into bargaining, it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting. We um have a great working environment, we have a great community. We attract uh people who are looking to build their careers here uh in municipal services. But we have to have enough pay to be competitive. So that's gonna be a fiscal challenge to the city and there'll be. More discussions about that um when they come out of bargaining, right? Bargaining is all in closed session right now. The state's working on a budget. We have a new budget team uh getting the benefit of a year and a almost year and a half long. Project by consultants who've tried to rebuild our processes, looked at, look at our fund balances, create. Better accounting methods, more consistently applied procedures. Um, it's coming together. We actually are making great progress, but we couldn't adopt the budget before June thirtieth, so we're gonna do that next week. The city also next week, council will be providing direction on a modification to the housing element. Which is the state requirement that allows us to provide more entitlements for housing, more dense housing. In this case, it's height limits and last year we asked the voters to approve a. Uh, rollback of height limits. The voter imposed height limits on certain sections of the city, not the whole city. And so now the council is going in and adjusting those height limits to achieve the right density under the state's requirements. And that's one of the big policy discussions next week. Uh, last meeting or maybe two meetings ago, I've actually missed a couple of meetings, including last night's. The city approved a contract to look for private public partnership ideas. For the Arroyo Seco Golf Course. That would be, you know, profit generating operators who would then uh revamp the golf course and pay the city some of the operating revenue. Uh, that comes on the heels of a very large. Uh, planning effort for the Arroyo Seco Golf Course where they hired a a big consultant. They had a huge ad hoc committee providing input and 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 then the council got seven consultants presenting. A multi ten million dollar plan for revamping the golf course. That has gone nowhere. And so looking at the public private partnership as a way to sort of make sure the city doesn't have to take all the financial burden itself. Is, I think, something that makes sense. That is potentially a relevant context for the decision, the direction that you've gotten on the library site plan. I think that's an important little contextual change is. I think that's all that I have. Oh, a bond. So you're gonna talk of a bond. I think last night they were going to talk publicly about it. In the nineteen nineties, there was Measure L, which was a thirty year bond that rebuilt the high school. And that's coming off the tax rolls in the next year or two. So it's been thirty years since that. Anyone remember? High school when it was revamped way back when?
Do you have a new high school or old high school?
I think I have.
Yeah, parts of the new.
I feel like there was some.
Yeah, right. So that bond is rolling off and there's gonna be an increment that the city really wants to use. What that increment means is we could fill that tax increment without actually increasing property taxes. So that would be a bond service tax that would replace what's there for Measure L. That could generate money that we will need for infrastructure. There's a very significant push, finally. Stars are aligning, so to speak, operationally um to get major infrastructure done. So watch for that. It's not anything we can announce, we're just talking about it. We obviously are gonna look at as many grants as we can find, as much state funding as we can find. There's. I don't know, there's dozen or more little pockets of transportation funds between the state and federal government. We always go after that money. But uh the big dollars will have to be the bond that we will need. Any questions? About anything?
Neighbors are really excited about new roads.
Yeah. Yeah, this this new budget, as it's being proposed, has got a very significant amount of new road. But but it's still somewhat of a dent and then we're not even at water yet. Water. Uh, there's gonna be some, eventually a rate study to figure out how to replace our water system, which is. You know, every every week there's a water main break somewhere. We just can't keep putting Band-Aids on it.
How old's the system?
Over a hundred years, yeah. Yeah, so we have a lot of infrastructure kind of coming on, that needs coming to ahead.
I have a question. If we're gonna replace water lines, we're gonna have to tear up the roads to do it. So why would we fix the roads and then tear them up?
We're not, we're not. We're doing a one dig to fix everything. So as we plan roads, we already have a water study. And we look at doing roads, water, infrastructure, all at the same time. The only time we wouldn't.
I'm guessing that uh District One had something to do with that.
No, no, it's it's, we got the color, there's a whole color coding system and. We've had about five or six presentations over the last two years on this comprehensive street repair program and the idea is you dig once. The reason it's taking long to get off the ground is because we do the engineering. For that whole street segment that looks at both water. Storm drain. Sewer. And the road reconstruction as well as the other.
Electrical where there's already, where where it's not already been done.
So if Edison, it's if it's feasible for Edison to actually bury the the lines, we might look at that. But a lot of our lines are in a backyard on poles, so we're not gonna dig a conduit. If Edison's not committed to bury the pipes. So, right now, there's no direction to provide that underground extra. Because why would we run wires if Edison's never gonna connect? And there's tons of easement issues. If you were converting an easement that runs on poles or through backyards to. Now, all of a sudden, we gotta redirect that all to.
Actually, let me rephrase my question. Are there areas of the town that that could be done in? To remove that we some of the above ground?
Possible.
What about um uh fiber, things like that, to be able to increase our access and and. Maybe potentially lower the cost of fiber access?
Yes, we've looked at all that. The city manager actually has experience. Looking at the cost benefit of all those things. I've invited them to meetings and. And, you know, we'll be talking about it. Yeah, I mean, if there's a lot of exciting things you can do, but. Yeah, I mean, if, if there's a lot of exciting things you can do, but we're just trying to do basics right now. Uh, dig once is really the philosophy, and so we actually have lots of contractors who would look at the engineering. So that we can put together a road, reconstruct a road. And do all the elements at one time, um, and that just takes a lot of planning, so, you know. The wheels aren't spinning and going nowhere, they're actually spinning out really good planning. And then we have to put the financing behind it, and of course, construction is very expensive, just, just is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Friends, they.
Not, not any crazy updates, I mean, the library staff does such an unbelievable job at running all, all those programs. So it's our pleasure to be able to fund them the way we do because we know that the programs are being run excellently. So that's like, yeah, it's just such a pleasure to know that, like, I think there might be some other funding requests. That are maybe coming up through the library in the next couple of meetings, so we'll see where those go. And then otherwise, our next big friends meeting, where we have some changes in an investment policy that's happening. We're um, also gonna be finalizing a couple of internal policies that allow kind of spending. Things to happen amongst your staff and we're kind of tinkering all those details, but that's, that's really. What we're doing logistically.
And your scholarship?
And we gave a fellowship this year, our first friend's scholarship, um, we gave it to a musician. Our, the, our restoration concerts committee really pushed this, we gave it to an individual named Holly Lacy. Who uh, is going to Yale and studying music there. And it's one of the most impressive programs that you can get into, so um, she was a knockout candidate and it was. Really clear uh, that she was the, the one the committee was, was most likely gonna select, so it was just an honor.
I may have mentioned this, at one time, I happened to be listening to a program on uh, K U S C on a Sunday. And she was the star attraction being interviewed.
She was also separately based on NPR as well as nationwide, she, she's, she was quite outstanding, she received a, a great number of scholarships.
Yeah, and some of the musicians that we've had in the past play at our restoration concert series. One of them actually wrote her a letter of recommendation, which was kind of just, you know, a re, a really nice tie into. The community and everything kind of coming together, um, and so that was, that was a big, big thing for our organization for the first time. Yeah.
Congratulations, thank you, uh, trustee liaison to the friends?
There was no meeting of the friends last month, so I have my. To them and my gratitude to them for continuing to support the library and its services.
Thank you, any other communications? No, okay. No more of a public comment, I think, because there's no one here. We, Sean, can we, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, so no further items or comments from staff or board members, I will now adjourn the meeting at eight fifty four P M. To our next meeting on August fourteenth.
September eleven.
September eleven, at seven P M.
Okay, thank you, everyone.